Audio test. Audio test.
Do you have it live going or live on the big screens out there as well?
It's not, it's not, it's a streaming issue. It's not on the streams because we're not able to.
Test, test, audio test.
I can hear you, Brian. Thank you. Uh, Councilman Ryan has us joining us virtually tonight. All right, let's start this meeting of October 22nd, 6:00 PM. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to a republic which it stands, one nation under God with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Present.
Councilmember Crossman.
Here.
Councilmember Kangizer.
Here.
Councilmember Hess.
Here.
He's here.
Did my audio not work?
There he is, just barely.
We can hear you now, councilmember.
Councilmember Palmer.
Here.
Councilmember Kaminsky.
Here.
Mayor DePinto.
Here. Uh, can we get an agenda approval?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Kaminsky. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? If you're curious. Moving on to special presentations, there are none scheduled. Moving on to public comment. Um, again, if you wish to address council, please fill out one of these cards. We've got nine of them right now. Um, everyone will have at least three minutes, up to three minutes to speak. Address council. Um, let's start off with Bill DeVore. Bill, you're gonna come back here.
Okay.
Yes, please stand at the podium over here and state your name.
We hand it out. Good evening, councilor and mayors. My name is Bill DeVore. I'm here to discuss the acquisition of the Toma Valley Golf Course. I have read and responded to the information about Florida on social media. After reading the mayor's statement, I have called and requested information surrounding the golf courses and the county. Water rights. Currently, the city holds all of the water rights to the Toma Valley Golf Course except for one. And that's the information I provided over here to, uh, Mr. Stansel. The only rights left are those needed to maintain the course on a daily basis. I had the documentation to provide the council and mayor. I was advised by the Department of Ecology that this paperwork is here also at the City Hall. Profitability. The current ownership of Toma Valley has no desire to put any money in the course or to help it make it grow, maintain its current clientele. If you own a business, you know that you get out of it what you put into it. Currently, the course is losing money with limited carts, twenty operational at this time. Lack of beverage cart on the course and no upgrades of any kind to the restaurant or the buildings. With the course lacking in upgrades and not sustaining current equipment means less people will show up to play. The current course has approximately fifteen thousand patrons per year with a revenue of approximately five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Compare that to Capital City with fifty-five thousand customers a year with the profitability by doing the numbers is just under two million dollars. Somewater Valley stated without providing numbers that 2024 was their most profitable year to date. High school teams. Currently, the Toma Valley Golf Course plays host to Yelm, Rainier, and Tenino Golf. They hold their matches there along with practice. I heard some state that a nine-hole course could still be used for the schools, which is inaccurate. When the boys are playing, the girls are practicing and vice versa. When you have three schools using the same court, you need eighteen holes to be able to play matches and practice on a daily basis. Changing the course to a nine-hole facility, if this happens, you might as well build houses or apartments because the nine-hole course will not be sustainable. If you call and speak to anyone who owns a nine-hole course, the sustainability equates to a loss of revenue. The first course that comes to mind is Delphi, which is an Olympia, who currently reaches out to different agencies because their profitability is not there. And to the homeowners, anyone who purchases a house on a golf course does so with the intent of playing golf or having the beautification of the course as their back view. I have spoken to few that live on the course who have stated if the property is purchased and is governed to the YMCA, they do not want to be part of that. In conclusion, I hope the information I provided will help decide whether the city of Yelm should purchase the course and go into business with the YMCA. I believe the responsible decision is to let someone private purchase the course and keep it as an eighteen-hole golf course to date. Thank you.
My name is Thomas Sprofski. I'm a sophomore at Rainier High School. I played for the Rainier High School golf team. When Rainier first started their golf team this last year, I was excited that Toma Valley would be our home course because it's close and because lots of times students would have to range their own rise and I can't drive until January. Over this past year, I've been fortunate to golf at Toma Valley over seventy times this year, including about an hour ago. This fall, I've partnered with a lot of different members in our community. I've golfed with people older than me and even a couple younger than me. I've heard a lot of stories from the older people in our community that I've golfed with about their lives, their personal history, the history of Yelm and the course. Every time I join a foursome, I seem to learn something. I believe that the course plays an important role for our community and our students. There aren't many places kids can go and play at golf at an affordable rate. I would ask you to keep an eighteen-hole course.
Sprofski, excuse me.
Good evening. My name is Jonathan Sprofski and I'm probably the worst golfer here, but it doesn't really stop me from loving the game. Uh, growing up, I remember coming to what was then called the Nusqually Valley Golf Course with my uncle. I remember the first time I came out with him. It was my freshman year in high school and it was after my father had died. And I'm not sure if he really wanted to take me with him, but my aunt thought it was a good idea. And I didn't know what I was doing, but I had a great time with some of his friends and I kept going with him over and over. And I was really glad that my son, Thomas, got to golf with him, uh, even a few times before he passed away last year. Um, this is more than just a golf course. It's a gathering place for families in the community. And so I'd encourage you not to destroy one community activity, uh, for the sake of another. There's plenty of room in this community for both. Uh, the course is also very important for youth in our community. Uh, since COVID, we've seen an explosion of golf among youth nationwide. I was one of the parents that helped start the Rainier Golf Team. And since 2020, uh, Toma Valley went from hosting two high school teams to now hosting six. Uh, it's not really surprising given the fact that most golf courses returned to normal operation, uh, during COVID by May of 2020. You might remember shutdown was in March. Most golf courses opened in May. Most of the YMCA's didn't even partially open until July of that year. In fact, high school golf was the first sport to return with no restrictions, uh, from the WIAA. But only an eighteen-hole course can sustain high school teams. Uh, said earlier, if the course were to be reduced to a nine-hole course, it would likely have to turn away high schoolers in favor of participants who can pay the full rate. Uh, when working with our youth golfers and our high school golfers, one of the first lessons we often teach is that golf is different than any of the other high school sports that's out there. Uh, not only is it a lifelong sport, but it's a game of honor and integrity. It's the only high school sport where your intentions truly matter. It's the only high school sport where you'll see a kid raise their hand, be honest, call a penalty on themselves that might disqualify them from the game, the match, or even a title. So I'd ask all of you to face this decision today like a high school golfer filled with honesty and integrity. If you intend to purchase the course to be used for our youth for future generations, preserve it as a community landmark, maintain it as an eighteen-hole course, grow the game of golf, then by all means, full steam ahead, both, you know, swing away. But if you don't believe the course's legacy and history will be preserved, or if you believe that other council members have less than honorable intent, raise your hand, call the penalty, walk away from this deal and let someone else do, if they can. Your citizens in the surrounding committee, committee, community deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Honorable Mayor, council members and community members. And I want to add some context to my comments. I do understand the local government can be kind of a thankless job. Sometimes you have to make really difficult decisions. I'm just finishing up a thirty-five-year career with Pierce County on Friday. So, uh, I get it. But thank you very much for the opportunity to speak today. I am not only a concerned resident and golf enthusiast, but also as someone with a deep personal connection to our beloved golf course. My husband, who's sitting right in front of me, his grandfather Archie Ferguson was its designer and founder. The Elm Golf Course is more than just a place to play. It is a testament to his grandfather's vision for community and connection. He believed in creating a space where families could come together, where friendships could flourish and where memories could be made. Today, that vision continues to thrive, serving as a gathering spot for our community. As was already said, this golf course welcomes more than fifteen thousand players each year, which in turn supports local businesses and contributes to the local economy. It promotes physical activity, mental well-being, and a sense of community pride. It also provides opportunity for youth development, ensuring that our next generation has a low barrier access to the sport that grows in popularity every year. As we discuss potential changes in our community, I understand there are considerations for locating the YMCA at the golf course and altering its use. I urge this council to explore the possibility of establishing the YMCA at another location rather than repurposing this well-used golf course. By doing so, we can have the best of both worlds and preserve this valuable space that has brought so much joy to our residents since the late sixties. I also urge this council to explore all avenues to preserve and enhance the golf course. Let's honor Archie's legacy and the value he instilled in this community. Let's not forget the countless stories that unfold on its greens, the laughter of our youngest learning to play, the camaraderie of friends, and the moments spent in this beautiful location with Mount Rainier in the distance. We have the power to safeguard this treasure for current and future generations. Thank you for your time and for your commitment to keeping Yelm a vibrant place for everyone.
Ever, ten, oh.
Yeah.
Good evening, council mayors, uh, members, mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My wife and I live on a golf course. Turning a golf course into a nine-hole course and building a YMCA will reduce the value of my home. No question about it. And all the homes around it. The golf course is absolutely the reason I purchased the house in the first place. Not only are members fun to talk to as they go by, it created a community in and of itself, but it also has its own ecosystem that you most likely will ruin with a construction of a YMCA. Eagles, owls, coyotes, deers, squirrels, raccoons, ducks, paws, the beauty of it is amazing. You don't need a YMCA there. While I'm not opposed to building a YMCA for the town of Yelm, I mean, who doesn't want a pool? Especially for the kids. You don't need to build it there. When you research the YMCA, you'll find that the big corporation CEOs make approximately three-quarters of a million dollars each annually, public Google information. The local director of the facility makes approximately a hundred and forty thousand dollars as the director. And he receives bonuses. You'll find the YMCA staff members get paid very little. Very similar to goodwill and other nonprofits like them. You're bringing minimum wage jobs. Jobs that staff cannot live on. If the YMCA wants to be in Yelm that bad, let them spend their own money in another location. Well, I'm glad the council is being responsible enough to have those funds available. There are other pressing matters to address, specifically the police department. Yelm has been riddled with thefts, shoplift vandalism, and auto thefts between Walmart, Safeway, Rite Aid, and even the golf course itself. The homeless are a major problem. Because, uh, they cause a lot of calls for service, which ties up police departments' time on a daily basis. You have nineteen officers and one detective when you should have thirty. Two officers every shift needs to be moved to three officers at a minimum. I've been to Walmart and watched firsthand where two city officers were there to arrest a shoplifter. And by the time I left the store twenty minutes later, one officer had returned with a sheriff's deputy to back him up to arrest another shoplifter. Okay? That's three officers, if law enforcement officers tied up for shoplifting, no, and with no one left to answer calls. I'm asking you to use my money wisely and give them a reasonable, reasonable wage increase and hire more officers within the community. Christina, uh, excuse me. Christina Brown is one of the worst business owners the city has ever seen. She's run the course into the ground. She hasn't spent a dime to maintain the course or the restaurant in years. That golf course has the per, the potential to profit considerably under proper management and bring it business into the community unlike any other sport.
Final thoughts, please. Final thoughts, please.
Final thoughts. Participation in golf has grown immensely by over fifty percent in the last few years. I'm running through my numbers here. The demographics of golf has grown. Under quality management, Toma Valley has the potential to bring golfers from around the Pacific Northwest and support local business. I'm asking the council to vote no on buying the golf course. If it's gonna happen anyways, let the YMCA spend its own money and build it elsewhere. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Good evening, folks. Um, I appreciate this opportunity just as much as everybody else. Um, I've got four pages of notes. I'm not going to go through all of them because most of them sentiment or echo the sentiments you've already heard.
You want to send those notes too?
I, I will drop them off with you if you don't mind. For, I want you to know I'm opposed to you purchasing this contract from the YMCA as proposed. What I've read on Mayor DePinto's post on Facebook, um, it is very clearly creates a winners and losers list. And the winners is headlined by a private company, which is the YMCA. Yes, they are nonprofit. They are a 501(c)(3) company, but they are a privately owned company. And they are the headlines of the winners in this proposal. The headlines of the losers is Kevin Bowman, is Dennis McDermott, is Dale Einer, is Gabe Buck. Is many of the people in this room with me here today are the headliners on the losers because you'll be taking something away from us to give to a private company. And I just find that unacceptable. And part of that premise that this private company may potentially benefit some unknown people in this community in the future at some point, but the immediate winners and losers, winners YMCA, losers all of us. So I urge you to vote no on this proposal and I thank you for your time once again.
Good evening, council. Um, I just want to preface this by saying I do own property inside city limits, so I do pay my taxes here. The YMCA parent organization released these figures for 2023. The Board of Directors collected a combined salary of four point two six million dollars. The total number, the total dollar amount in savings is thirty-one point six million dollars. Their total assets are two hundred and six million dollars. Their total liabilities are only forty-eight million dollars. And in the last five years, the YMCA parent corporation took in five hundred and fifty-one million dollars in support. The South Sound YMCA released their 2022 numbers. Their net revenue was fourteen million dollars. Their net expenses were eleven million dollars, leaving them with three million dollars to spare. And their assets are twenty-nine point two million dollars. Why is the YMCA buying this property only to turn it around to and sign it to the city? The YMCA can easily afford the property outright. If the city wants the property, why doesn't the city just buy it? Why are you using a middleman? What's in it for the YMCA? This makes no sense and demands further transparency from the city. This makes no sense and demands further transparency from the city. The YMCA stands for the Young Men's Christian Association. Its mission statement is, quote, "To put Christian principles into practices through programs that build healthy spirit, mind and body for all." YMCA is a dedicated religious organization. Does Yellma plan to assign the property or a portion of it to the YMCA for its sports complex? This violates the First Amendment of the U.S. Constitution, which prohibits the government from favoring one religion over another and advancing religion. The city of Yellma should be extremely careful about how it shares its resources. The city can do better things with that two point six million dollars. We need sidewalks all over town. We need more employees to help maintain what we do have, including public works, public safety, the courts and administration. The city still hasn't figured out what to do with its back six forty acres. Why are you considering buying another huge parcel and one that requires both employee hours and physical resources to maintain? Why aren't you working on an easement so that you can access that back six forty? Why can't you use part of that two point six million dollars to buy an easement or land that will allow access to the six forty? This proposal is fiscally, logically and constitutionally unsound. The city should not enter into this agreement. Please vote no.
Justin Stefan.
Mr. Mayor, Council Members, thank you so much. Dustin Stefan, Michelle Stefan, we own Yard here in town. I'll self-admit, I don't know much about the water rights. All right, I understand that in order for the city to rapidly grow as it has, we probably need to secure those resources. And if the city was looking at this project to purchase it and maintain the golf course as is and access those rights, I don't think most of us would be here in this capacity. My biggest concern is that large outside entities being proposed to come to town and, and compete with organizations and small businesses that already serve the community. Yard is locally owned. We're connected to the community. We know the pulse of the community. We have the heartbeat. We have successful programs already in place, similar to what YMCA already offers. Some of these project or programs, not limited to, but do include a successful early skills and development class for our young community members to learn how to handle themselves in an educational environment. We have a successful academic tutoring program that's available to all students in our community and surrounding areas. We offer life skills classes to include cooking, resume building, interview courses, CPR, basic finance, et cetera, et cetera. We have a successful sports training program that includes strength and conditioning. Yard is actually in conversation, has a viable plan to expand our current operation to a community campus. The campus would include a teen center, would include access for families that need social services in one place. An expanded strength and conditionary, conditioning area to include recovery center for our athletes. An expanded life skills division to better serve our community. To expand our already in operation batting cages and explore the possibility of adding basketball gyms. We have had these conversations with community members and community organizations already. Now, the details of this and location are still, have not been disclosed, but know these conversations are being had. The current proposal in question tonight would lead you to believe that you have to choose between an eighteen-hole golf course and the facilities and programs mentioned. I'm here to tell you that there is an alternative. The community definitely needs this eighteen-hole golf course as displayed today. It also needs the services that we've talked about and that Yard currently offers and plans on expanding to. So both those programs can operate at the same time. In previous open council, this large organization has made public statements about the support of small business and wanting to reach out and coordinate what that partnership would look like. I have yet to receive that phone call. I personally have reached out through third party to this organization and still no scheduled meetings are in place.
I don't think it's in place.
Uh, Council, I would ask for your continued support in small business and the small community and allow Yard to grow and continue to serve Yellma, walk preserving the eighteen-hole golf course. Thank you.
Well, I feel a bit like a fish out of water here because I'm not here to talk about the golf course. But there is a part that does relate to all, all of you wonderful people who are here. So I'll make four brief comments. First, I want to give sincere thanks to the, our council members. You really work hard. I know this because I know some of you on behalf of the people of Yellma to make our city a really good place to live, and it is a good place to live, and we want it to be a completely good place to live. Despite having full-time jobs and families, you dedicate an enormous amount of time for our benefit, very little of which is visible to us or may be appreciated by the rest of us. So I for one want to thank you all for your good work. I also want to express my appreciation to the people like all of you who came tonight. We, we need to make our voices heard. We need to show that we're paying attention. We need, and we need to listen and learn about the complexities that are involved in decisions. And at a recent meeting about the six hundred and forty acres, council members expressed their genuine appreciation to the crowd of people who attended. And it showed me at that moment how much it means to them that we're all here and we should keep, we should keep participating. We should keep making our voices be heard. It's extremely important. Thirdly, I believe you could do a much better job of engaging people in your work. Your website and Facebook page are informative, but forgive me, to me, they're kind of boring. I recommend, I recommend that you engage an expert who knows social media marketing. Nowadays, social media is the space where people receive information. It's personal, it's in real time. It gets people engaged enough to look for more information on those other sites. So I encourage you to do that. Lastly, and this is very important to me, I want to see council members ask the hard questions of each other, challenge each other on the status quo. Beware the trap the group think, a real phenomenon that occurs in groups, and I have an article about that to be passed out. Stay open to the wild idea. Ask yourselves, how can this wild idea enrich our decision-making? That's what great leaders do, and that's how exciting futures are brought into being. I don't want a common run-of-the-mill city. What I want, like all the people here, is a beautiful community that's alive and unique. And I think that must be what you want too. And as a final note, I ask you to always consider beauty, like this beautiful golf course. Always consider beauty in this world of too many ugly things. We all need more beauty. I'll need more beauty. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak before we move on? Alrighty, thank you for, for voicing your concerns and your opinions on what council should do and the city should move forward. It is the first under new business, so if you want to stick around for that, it will be up first and you can see how the vote goes. Moving on now to the consent agenda. We have the October first, twenty twenty-four study session minutes. And October eighth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting minutes. July twenty four, twenty four, check register and position summary. The August twenty twenty-four check register and position summary. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second by Councilmember Kingizer. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Also waiting for Councilmember Hess. All those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Councilmember Hess, are you still on with us?
I am still on. I'm listening. It just takes a while for me to get that voice to go.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Alright, moving on to new business. This is for the Brooksdale Golf LLC assignment, a purchase and sale agreement. Before I hand it over to Todd and staff, I do want to say that the Elm City Council held executive sessions on September twenty-fourth and October eighth to discuss the acquisition of real estate, as allowed by the RCW in relation to this. No final action is determined in executive session. It's mainly to determine, it's mainly to discuss the acquisition of real estate in the likelihood that it could possibly or potentially raise the price or impact the pricing. No decisions again were made during those discussions. And next, should this pass, it isn't the final say in what happens with this property. We would likely go into a feasibility or finish the feasibility study. We're back. The staff would immediately look at the wells to ensure that they are producing the amount of water that is thought to be there, the water rights, to ensure that the water rights are, are there. And at any point, if that doesn't hold up, council absolutely has a right to back off and we would give a recommendation that would suggest so. That being said, if it does pass tonight, it would go to a study session where we would present all these findings to the public and the council. The next meeting in the second Tuesday of November would be then the, a budget amendment request for city council to actually make the purchase of that golf course. So there's still a lot of public input that has to be made. There's no decisions on the future of it. This would be just for the purchase of it. And whether it remains the golf course, whatever happens in the future, council has to make that decision on as well. So it's not a unilateral decision. There'll be public input on that process as well, but we have a long ways to go before that. Right now, I believe Todd's gonna talk about the water rights and the wells and what we're, what the current situation is with it.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Yes, thank you for coming. I just wanted to point something out that Mr. Sproski said he was the worst golfer here. I'm pretty sure you're not. We'll have to golf sometime. I'll show you. So what, what, what's in front of you all tonight is the action to authorize Mayor DePinto to accept the assignment of the purchase and sale agreement from the South Sound YMCA for the Brooklyn property. Some information background, South Sound YMCA is currently under contract to purchase the property, including buildings at one five four two five Mossman Avenue. YMCA wishes to assign their contract to the city of Yellma, allowing the city of Yellma to purchase the property at the contract price of two point six million dollars. The key benefit for the city of Yellma are the water rights and the well associated with the property. The additional water rights will allow the city to meet demands for the foreseeable future and potentially reduce future costs.
Thank you. Council, let's see, hear some discussion. Anyone want to start us off?
Thank you guys for coming out and being so passionate about what you believe, and I hear you all, and I am a hundred percent in agreement. Even if the city, for me, buys the golf course, I don't want it to change one iota. I've lived in Yellma twenty-five years, and twenty of those years I've lived on that very golf course, and I don't want it to change at all. This assignment removes the YMCA from the picture and allows us to gather the information they already have done in their feasibility study. Gather as Todd said about the well. We learned today from Cody and Public Services that for the city to drill a new well, it would cost us six million dollars. So if that well is viable, if it is right there, it would be kind of not smart to not really consider that two point six for a future well. So we are looking forward into the future, and this feasibility study is over November seventeenth. This just gives us an opportunity to do more due diligence, more talking and executive sessions and allow you to come back and then we make a decision. So this on the docket right now is not a firm decision. It just allows us to get the information already done.
Uh, Councilmember Richardson.
I think, um, I think what is happening tonight is more than just whether or not we are looking forward to the future of, you know, economics or viability. What I think is happening tonight is residents of Yellma are attending this to let you know how much there's a culture that's deeper than government. And sometimes when we make choices, and I know in the city of Yellma, I would say the city of Yellma has made some decent choices recently and has really, you know, and then we get our scrutiny. We get criticized. It's okay. You gotta have thick skin. So with this in place and to see what I've heard and what I've experienced and the people that have spoken, sometimes I think, you know, it seems like this is a good thing. This is a good decision, but sometimes rather than making just a positive.
How come we haven't discussion without a motion? A motion has been made, and here we are discussing a particular item.
You're discussing the item under new business. It doesn't have to be motion to discuss it. We are, we have had a staff briefing and then we have had a conversation, council. If council does not wish to move forward, that's fine, but the discussion still can occur.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilmember Richardson.
I'll forgive you. It's good. Um, so beyond that, long story short, I think, I think sometimes, sometimes we might need to just slow down a little bit and listen to people before we have the opportunity to make decisions. And so that being said, I'm just gonna leave it at that.
Councilmember Hess.
Yes, I, I have a few questions in reference to this and that it deals with when purchasing the golf course, I understand we get the water rights and the buildings. I didn't quite hear, are we getting all the equipment that is associated with it as well? That is a question I would like to know if that's also included in that purchase price.
Yes, Cody or Todd, do you wanna? The answer is yes. We would get all the equipment and relatable property to that golf course, the operations of it.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Director Cole.
Councilor, oh, excuse me, Councilor Wood, he hasn't spoken yet. Go ahead.
I just, I just want to be clear that this, you know, I can't speak for the rest of the council members, but I can speak for myself. My concern is that this whole, this eighteen-hole golf course is considered for something else. I think that'd be a tragic mistake. And the discussion about the, I can see everyone's concern about the YMCA, and I can assure you, that's, that's absolutely not anything I'm interested in as one council member, and I believe I'm not alone on this on the council here. So to put your concerns to rest, YMCA being, that's one thing that we need to make sure, and we as a council will be very sure is, is not hidden somewhere in the agenda to, to give, give them, you know, some sort of control over what happens here later on. It's, my understanding of this is if, if we purchase this as the city, it's completely away the YMCA is going to step away. They have no concern, no say, no anything in what we do in the future with, with that. And once again, my, I'm a property owner here as well as a business owner, and I don't want to see an eighteen-hole golf course go away. Whoa, how would that differentiate from anybody else, any other small city that doesn't really, you know, have this, this fantastic situation that Mr. Ferguson's grandfather envisioned way back in the day? So I'm personally thankful that we have it and I'm gonna fight for us to keep it. And that is, that's my, my interest in the city purchasing that is for the purpose of us having control over what direction this thing goes and what, you know, where, where it is in the future, and, you know, making sure that we don't end up with, with a lot more infrastructure we weren't looking for.
Say something. We learned today also, there is a way, if the city owned the property, that we could record the golf course as permanent open space into perpetuity that would never be changed, could never be rezoned, would always be what it is right now. We would be.
I'm, I'm glad to hear that because that, that was one of my concerns that I expressed. If we were to purchase this, I want it to remain a golf course forever. I don't want it to change. It's part, I grew up by that golf course. I want it to main, maintain, you know, be right there for the community, future generations. So I'm glad that, that's good info because that was something I was concerned about and was wondering if it was something that we could.
And we could have it managed and maintained and upgraded and be a real vital city property for the public to use. That's what we want.
Other comments, questions? Councilor Crossman.
I might as well since, give my opinion, again, it's my opinion of the council. I, I am not for government-only businesses. I don't think they do a very good job of running businesses. A government job, I believe, is for managing. You manage the city itself, not running a business. My concern is with, you know, we get a, we take over this golf course, a management company that the city decides to hire could run into the ground with no repercussion in the city. Would this say, oh, well, we tried, it failed, and now we're just going to turn it into something else instead where there's more motive for a private entity to make sure it succeeds? Because, you know, they gotta make their money. So that's a big concern that I have. And that deals with any kind of business that the. And that deals with any kind of business that the city wants to own, uh, this is a golf course, but yeah, I grew up in Yale, golf course, been here a long time. I suck at golf. So we can join, we can see who can play the longest night, ten eighteen holes in life, whoever contests. Um, so yeah, I don't play golf, but I see the value of it and I think it would be sad to lose that eighteen hole golf course.
Council Richardson.
Well, um, after hearing Councilmember Crossman as well, um. You know, sometimes I I think if there's, if there's a better option out there. And I know this has to be, you know, sometimes you wanna keep things within your control. But then I think also, I think what we've heard and witnessed tonight, I think there, there's a lot of heart and and movement behind that as well. So I don't, I don't know necessarily, if if it's all about, you know, water rights, that's one thing, but I I think if there's an opportunity. That maybe someone else, a different entity besides the city that could do better to that golf course than the city can. Cuz that is a possibility, that we should allow that to happen, um, because if we do take the control of that, then is that viable? To even be a thing. So I just wanna keep an open mind there uh for any options that uh, cuz sometimes if somebody can do something better than you, let them do it. You know, so we gotta figure that out.
Other comments, questions? Councilmember Kaminsky.
I usually don't talk very much at all, um, just a point that if the city was to acquire those uh water rights. Then we would be able to give the golf course back reclaimed water, so it would still be able to be a golf course, no problem. Is that correct, Todd?
Councilmember Hess.
That was a mistake, I apologize.
Other questions, comments? Or motion? Councilmember Kaminsky.
I move to authorize Mayor DePinto to accept the assignment of the purchase and sale agreement. From Southside YMCA for the Brookdale Golf Course at fifteen four twenty-five Mossman Avenue Southwest.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hess, we'll do a roll call vote, Councilmember.
Point of order. Little more discussion on the topic prior to the vote, if you don't mind.
Yeah, so it's a motion second, we'll do a roll call vote, but any further discussion? Councilmember Wood.
Um, I just want to clarify that this is just an opportunity for us to dig deeper into this to to in fact verify that. It is as it appears that all other parties will be walking away from it and we are entirely in charge of this. Without any, any sort of future awareness or understanding that we're going to do anything as far as uh giving anybody an opportunity.
Yeah, and just to be clear, there is no secret agreements or there's no, nothing in the contract that states that the YMCA has to be a part of it moving forward or anything like that. Um, but Todd, do you wanna kinda speak to what this, what would um allow us to do or not do?
Well, as, as Councilmember Kaminsky said earlier, it basically just allows us three more weeks uh feasibility. Uh, the big piece would be the well, uh, to get the well inspected, to see if it can be upgraded uh to a standard that would be of use to us. Um, and then of course, just whatever feasibility has had to be done that haven't been done yet is what we would do.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Hess.
I just wanna make sure and I wanna clarify, there is no cost to doing this, is that correct?
Todd?
Is he asking about the feasibility?
I believe so, if we, if we, if council passes this, what cost?
There, there will be some feasibility costs for inspections and the and the inspection of the well.
Do we have an estimate for any of that? We're gonna do inspection and house, there's no cost for the well inspection, we're gonna do that with our.
It'd be just the structural then.
Doesn't sound like it, Councilmember Hess. It sounds like it's a little expensive, if any. Councilor Crossman.
Is there earnest money, expense?
Todd?
Not until the feasibility is up.
Um, which, I think, yeah, the the timeframe, what if we decide not to proceed?
We would have to before November seventeen, before November seventeenth.
Which again, after this feasibility, um, period, we would present some of those ideas and different um options to the city council. Um, including maintain it as a golf course. Um, and um in our, in RFP request for proposal process, if um other entities wish to to do it. Um, there's different options the council can consider and then at the first, excuse me, this, yeah, the first city council meeting on the second Tuesday of November. Um, council would have that option to either accept that and uh purchase it with the funds or we'll walk away. All right, if there isn't.
One quick question.
Go ahead, Councilmember Kaminsky.
Does anybody know whether the seller is aware of this assignment?
I believe they are. Yes.
I believe so.
Any further questions, comments? All right, we'll do a roll call vote, Councilmember Wood.
Hi.
Councilmember Richardson.
No.
Councilmember Crossman.
No.
Councilmember Kangizer. Councilmember Hess.
I.
Councilmember Palmer.
No.
Councilmember Kaminsky.
Yes.
Um, motion fails, uh, four to three, right?
Yes.
All right, moving on, we have the twenty twenty-five. Who participated and commented on this, um, if you wish to stay for the rest of the council meeting, you're more than welcome. If not, um, I'm sure there will be a few, uh, would you mind exiting now so we can move on the rest? We'll just take a second here.
Thank you, guys. Folks, thank you very much.
Come play some golf.
Nobody wants to listen about property taxing piece?
Thank you.
Take a second.
Steve's interested, yes, Steve.
Tony, will you ask him if anyone's interested in saying?
That's why I like Steve, he actually cares about it.
Moving on to the twenty twenty-five ad valorem property tax public hearing. I believe I have to. Make my statement first, Kathy, for the ad valorem.
It's cuz we need to work public hearing, all right.
We're gonna open up the public hearing on the twenty twenty-four ad valorem property tax at six forty-six. This public hearing will proceed in orderly fashion, I'd like to ask for cooperation, the following procedure, everyone will be given an opportunity to hear, to be heard. If you're online and wish to like to comment, please raise your hand, I'll call on you when your time, your turn to speak. Start by stating your name and address for the record, uh, let's have a staff report before we start. Go ahead.
Um, it's gonna take a few minutes to get that pulled up, I'm sorry.
Um, well, as we wait, thank you, council, for the good vigorous conversation and debate. We will um again shortly here, as soon as Stephanie is ready.
I'm trying to harness the drive, it's just really slow opening, I got, I don't know what.
Well, hmm, I can just talk about approximate numbers. So, um, the twenty twenty-four property tax was uh like one million six hundred ninety-nine thousand. We did not take the one percent increase in the prior year. Um, and the ordinance that we'll bring to council, we are not recommending the one percent increase for twenty twenty-five either. So, um, we do have about eighty-five thousand of new construction that has come on to. Our annexation area and then we have about ninety-eight hundred of, they call them refunds, it's um. It's hard to explain refunds, but um it's just something that when properties are sold or. Something happens with the assessment role, it's just a more like a correction, so there's about ninety-eight hundred of corrections. Um, like I said, about eighty-five thousand of new annexations. So you take last year's property tax levy amount of the one million six hundred ninety-nine thousand. Add the eighty-five thousand plus the ninety-eight hundred and that will give us the um property tax for twenty twenty-five. So, as I've said before in earlier meetings, um, we don't have the final numbers from Thurston County Assessor's Office yet. So that could change slightly, um, and as, when we get to the second public hearing for property tax. We should have those final numbers from Thurston County, I do not expect them to change very much though. Um, I think it, we're gonna be around that um ballpark, so. And uh.
We're almost there.
We're having the system, so, uh, what I was gonna show on the screen was just the calculation of what I just talked about, so. Are there any questions about the property tax?
Councilwoman.
Uh, we're talking about the ad valorem property tax, correct?
Right.
Uh, can you explain how that, what that one percent means? Cuz uh, I I thought I had an understanding and I may be a little confused, but my understanding is that's one, uh, an additional one percent of a tax that's already being collected. That doesn't increase people's property tax, is that correct?
So, so what you do is you take our prior year levy amount, which was one million six hundred ninety-nine thousand, you multiply that by one percent. So basically, if we wanted, we could increase the dollar amount of our collection by about sixteen thousand.
Okay.
So in order to get somebody's actual property tax number. You have to take our levy amount divided by the assessed value of the entire city, right? And then, um. Divide that by a thousand, that will give you a rate. And then you take that rate and multiply it by your home's assessed value. So the overall assessed value has increased citywide, it's just increased a little bit, so, um. We are not asking for an additional one percent from the community, but, um. You know, as far as the rate itself, that kind of fluctuates with assessed value, that division um equation that I just talked about, so.
Is, is that ask a one percent of from the community or is it a one percent ask of the the state?
No, it's the.
Bring back our, the tax, uh, one percent more of the taxes that they've collected?
It's one percent more of what your community is going to pay. So, so it's sixteen thousand additional dollars that the citizens of the community. Would it be divided out between all of them, so it's an additional amount that they would pay.
So it is in addition to the uh, to citizens, okay.
And we have not, I mean, I've been here three years and we haven't taken the one percent in the last three years.
Uh, the reason I ask is there was some confusion in the past about this, I know for years we didn't take it. And then the, the understanding became that that, that not taking it wasn't impacting uh. Uh, the citizens, whether we took that or not, and as I, as I mentioned, my understa- what I was led to believe. Was that it was an, it was just an increase in the percentage that we took from the state of the sales tax that they already collected on their level.
It's property tax and it's.
That, pardon me, property tax, I apologize.
It's, the state doesn't pay us any property tax, it's, the property tax that we get is off the assessed values of our citizens. So the state is not in that equation.
Okay, so you're saying that this increase, this increases a one percent increase, would be, if we, if we chose to increase it, would be a one percent increase on the citizens.
Right.
Okay, thanks, appreciate it.
Other questions, comments? Council Richardson.
So again, just as, as he's asking questions, I'm trying to understand this, so basically the one percent we're privy to, but we're electing not to do so.
Correct.
Yeah, that's all I need to know.
Councilor. Go ahead.
I'm curious, uh. You mentioned it was roughly, you were, your figure was roughly sixteen thousand.
Yes, so. If you look at line A up there. It says twenty twenty-four. And then it says our levy was one million six hundred ninety-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-eight dollars. If I. See where it says one hundred percent? That means that we're just doing that same amount for twenty twenty-five. If we're gonna do one percent increase, it'd be one hundred and one percent. And then that sixteen ninety-nine would be one million six ninety-nine plus sixteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-five thousand, yeah.
And it compounds, so year after year, if we don't take it, it's more, but it's also same with the residents, it would take more and more every year.
Right. Did you see what I'm talking about?
It's not, no, I'm not gonna give my opinion on it, but I, we've discussed it um prior when we served on council together. Um, I, I think we were given information that was incorrect a lot of times, um, but.
I agree with you, because that's why I'm trying to, trying to understand exactly what this, what this mean.
I remember, yeah, I remember exactly asking that direct question and getting a completely different answer.
So if you, sorry, if you want at the next meeting. I have, um, you know, PowerPoints on how the levies are calculated, it's a little easier to understand. This is a levy worksheet that Thurston County requires we fill out, but if you want, I can like bring some examples and show you.
For a study session perhaps.
Yeah, I can do that, awesome, okay.
Um, Western's comments?
I don't have anything else.
Okay, um, can I close it or is there anything else you wanna?
I don't have anything else.
All right. We'll close the public hearing, is there anyone from the public that wishes to testify on this? All right, we will go ahead and um close, close the public hearing at six fifty-five. Excuse me, Councilmember Hess, go ahead.
Oh, I was gonna let you close it and I just wanted to ask, um, from the Finance Director. I know she said she'd offer it up, but also she could email that information, it'd be great, so that we can have a read ahead, so we come up with questions prior to seeing her.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the. Um, I didn't see on, under new business, the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six biennial budget, public hearing, um, do I need a? Open I do. So go ahead and open the public hearing of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six biennial budget at six fifty-five. Um, everyone will be having an opportunity to be heard if they wish to speak. Um, let's have a staff report, Stephanie.
Um, so we don't have a lot of changes from my presentation I did at the last time as far as our um numbers. That we presented as part of the preliminary budget, um. Do you have any? Yeah, we really haven't had any changes in numbers, we haven't had any, um. So the union negotiations are still ongoing. Once those are resolved, that's going to change the numbers slightly, we just don't have that information yet. And then like I said, I don't have the final property tax information, everything else that we've put in the budget. Um, and that we presented to you, I don't expect a lot of changes, so. You wanna show, Kathy's gonna just show that. Um. Citywide um summary that we shared last time, so. I'd be happy to answer any questions about specific funds or things that you, we talked about last time or they, um. You know, if you have any questions, we are gonna go over the capital budget tonight. Um, Cody and I will kind of present all the pu- the capital request in a little bit. Um, that's about all, don't have any changes.
All right, any comments, questions from the council? Any questions, comments from the public? Uh, we will go ahead and close this public hearing at six fifty-seven, move on. All right, moving on to item D, ordinance number one, one, two, three, clearing potholes, a nuisance. Cody, I believe this is you. Nope, Gary, please.
I'm back here in the corner. Trip over your cord.
Hey, thank you.
So uh I actually have two tonight, so I'll start with eleven twenty three. And you all have had a study session on both of the things that you're gonna see. So um maybe I'll do a little bit more of an abbreviated presentation. I won't put you through it again. Uh the first one, um eleven twenty three is basically a nuisance ordinance and it's declaring potholes a public nuisance. Uh and it is for the intent of being able to address situations that we sometimes get into where we have a pothole that is actually um generating a lot of complaints. Folks who want the city to take care of it because they think it's our pothole, but it's actually a private property. And everybody knows about the Yelm Canyon. It's been memorialized. That's that's our, you know, next to the definition of nuisance. It's there's a picture of it. And it's for things like that. So the ordinance itself would um establish a process for determining when there isn't a nuisance. Um and once again, this wouldn't be something that we would be proactively going out and looking for for things to patch. It would be based on um damage to vehicles, potential injuries to citizens and complaints from citizens. And the process we would use would be to basically send a notice to the property owner to abate the nuisance. If the nuisance is not abated, um we we have a timeline in there that says it cannot be less than five days or ten days if it's a mailed notice, but it'll be more something along the lines of thirty day notice. We wouldn't expect somebody to jump out there in five days. Um but if it's not addressed within five days, then that gives the city the authority to fix the nuisance and then build a property. Previously, there was a penalty in there. We've removed that. So there there would be no penalty, no fines like a daily fine. But we would have the authority to go in and fix it and then build a property owner. We have the same kind of setup right now for stormwater facilities because subdivisions are required through their homeowners associations to maintain their stormwater facilities. Sometimes they don't. And we notify them uh that they need to, but if they don't, then we have the ability to go in and and actually do the mowing and the cleanup and build them. So this is a analogous to that. That's all I have to present on this.
Counsel Richardson.
Um so really, when it comes down to it, we're we're talking about public public roads versus private roads. And the reason why we can't fix nothing is because it's privately owned. But this would enable the city that if there's a road that is private that I would imagine that a lot of people use. And I'm not big on HOAs, but the idea is if you can't take care of your own property as a private owner, then we're gonna enable the city to be empowered to help you do this.
Yeah, and and the in addition to that, this would just be private ownership of areas where the public travels. So I mean, we have, I I think we have an example. I forget the name of the street that was closed off. It had to be Algeir's. But that's streets blocked off, so we're not gonna make them patch that. But if you're driving your vehicle, you know, again, into Yelm Canyon or something like that, that becomes a kind of a uh an issue for the citizens of the city.
But you're probably not gonna be the pothole police. You're just gonna make sure that.
Yes, right. You know, we we've got other things on our podium, so.
Counselor Wood.
Well, curious if we know why they shut down Algeir's Road over there.
I think it was because of that issue, but I'm not for sure. I don't. It wasn't indirect.
So if it were, just hypothetically, let's say it were. The answer they had was if uh just they had potholes, they got tired of hearing about it, so they shut down the road. So like but that uh there's no concern about that being, you know, as we've talked about and we've we've beaten down to the point of what this is about is that that one section over there by the strip mall that is being used as a thoroughfare. So it just seems unusual that uh you know, that's the route we choose is to.
Well, what would the alternative be? I mean, we're I don't consider Algeir's to be an example of what's gonna happen in the future. Nobody's gonna block off the access to.
To their business rate and.
And the grocery stores and things like that, so.
It is different because there's different access points for that property. They wouldn't, a business wouldn't say you can't drive in our we're just not gonna open it up because they have to do business, obviously. So um I I think that's a different situation. I get where you're coming from on it, but I think it's a little bit different of an example than um as the Yelm Canyon, if you will, and in that instance.
I just believe we're going about this wrong. I think the situation area can be addressed by the city rather than the, you know, giving the city teeth to to if if somebody can't afford to uh repair their pothole because maybe their business isn't doing so well. You know, maybe there's something going on and they can't afford it and all of a sudden they've got the pressure of the city there to uh to say, hey, fix your pothole. And I can I can tell you from pothole repairs, they're not cheap. And secondly, try to get it, go ahead, try to get somebody out here right now as a private business owner to fix a pothole. You know, there's there's not a bunch of people chomping at the bit to do it.
We do have the beautification grant, uh which I believe they could apply for as well under that. Is that Todd looking at you? Beautification grant? Or maybe Kathy, who I know.
Oh, no.
I don't know. I don't know off the top of my head. I would have to read the read that through that one again. It doesn't seem like that would be.
Yeah.
Beautification. All right, that's a stretch. Counsel Richardson.
I'm not a business owner, but my question is, and I think we might have asked this before, if that is responsibility versus the business owner or the person owns the building, which a lot of times the people who are businesses in this community don't necessarily own the building. So then that would fall on the principal responsibility of the person who owns the building, I would imagine.
Yes.
Okay.
Counselor Hess.
Yes, um I just wanna make sure that I get some clarification in reference to how this will work. And that is that somebody brings it up from the community saying that there's this pothole and nothing's being done. That could be the that could be a business owner that's leasing in on the property or even a citizen. Am I correct on that?
That's correct. I mean, that's that would be the primary way. I mean, I could see instances where we would learn of somebody being injured or property damage uh where it wouldn't necessarily directly have to be a complaint. That's gonna be rare. But it's the intent is it's primarily probably ninety percent gonna be complaint driven.
Okay, and then just to go on with let when we had discussion during the study session, it was a very learning experience for me coming from council member Ken Geiser, who explained the process of being a business owner that leases and how even though we go to the property owner itself, it's those individuals that will have their lease possibly increased to cover the said cost. But what we're going after is not the individual business, but the property owners themselves. Is that correct?
The owner of the property.
Counsel Richardson.
I'd uh make a motion to approve order in ordinance number one, one, two, three, creating municipal code declaring potholes a public nuisance.
Second. There a second? Second, my councilor Hess, is there any further discussion? Counselor Wood.
I just would be concerned that in lieu of uh potential potential property owners, I suppose, in lieu of of receiving one of these com- or you know alerts from the city would have the option of, you know, beings, it's not a public road would ha- and being used as a public road. Those property owners would have the potential ability to shut off the entrance from from any given direction based off of who owns the property and and how it's being used. If it's being used for a thoroughfare and in man in 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 essence destroying the asphalt because it wasn't destroyed, it wasn't designed nor built for a a a community road. It was it was designed and built for a parking lot. But if it's being used and designed for a community road, it's in in essence, as as we've seen out at the uh the Yelm Historical Canyon there, um it's the the damage is gonna be done and and it's it's being done not because of the the normal wear and tear of use of the parking lot, but because the parking lot is being used as a thoroughfare. I think it's our responsibility to consider putting a thoroughfare through where the community is already driving.
Counselor Crossman.
Um where the the notice to the landowner, they have a pothole. Is that, do they get that notification before it beca- to comes to council or after it comes to council approval?
Uh let me look at that. I'm actually not.
Like, yeah, what's the steps, basically, uh? As you said that, you know, okay, I like that you removed the fines.
Yeah.
Um and you said it has to be declared a nuisance by council, not this one person in the building department.
Double check.
So, yeah, so they can potentially come to council and plead their case like, hey, any.
I mean, I think it goes to the clerk first. But I have to double check.
Regardless, council would have the final say on this if to pass or not to declare a nuisance.
Anybody can appeal it to the council.
Councilmember Richardson.
I'm just speaking of opinion, I guess. Um if you're a property owner and you don't take care of your property, um that's on you. And if you can't figure that out in due time, maybe you shouldn't have property.
Other questions, comments? The motion is seconded. Uh let's do a roll call vote. Starting with councilmember Kaminsky.
Oh, yes.
Counselor Palmer.
No.
Counselor Hess.
Yes.
Counselor Kingizer.
Yes.
Counselor Crossman.
Yes.
Counselor Richardson.
Yes.
Counselor Wood.
No.
Motion carries. Thank you, Gary. And uh moving on to number E or letter E ordinance number one, one, two, four, updates title eighteen Unified Development Code. Gary.
Hey, thank you. Though, as I said earlier, you've uh kinda gone over this, these proposed code changes in a work session. So from time to time, when we're, you know, in the office or or working with citizens, we'll find things in the code that sometimes are not clear. Sometimes there are things that aren't working. Um sometimes we need to make changes based on new laws and things like that. And when we come across those, we have a little table, code changes table, and we just deposit them in that table and just sort of keep track of them until we feel like we've got a big enough batch to tackle them. So there we're not doing uh one ordinance at a time for one little code change. So that this kind of represents that. We've had a few situations come up. Like Mister Mister Craig's property is one that that brought drew our attention to some things that weren't really working real well in our central business district. The firsts have property in the central business district and they were having a lot of challenges to being able to develop in there because of uh just some of the aspects of our code that were just making it not functional. So um that kind of generated this new batch. Um but there are several other things. So if you look at, I don't know, let me see here. This is where I get nervous. I I'm terrible at sharing on Zoom, so let's just see if I can do this. I'm nervous. Okay. I did it. So um I'm gonna go to page two of the staff report. I don't know if you have that in your hands, but if I scroll. Because page two kind of summarizes um the changes that are in this proposal. They're throughout various sections of the code. So I mean, we're not, you print everything out here. We got forty five pages. We don't need to go through that and every single page. But the summary will give you an idea or just refresh you on um shoot. Let's see. Bear with me. Okay, here it is. So this summarizes the changes that we have proposed. And I wanna point out that in addition to your study session, we've had three work sessions with the planning commission on this, three readings of our proposal. And then we had a hearing. So they saw it four times. You've seen it at study session and I think in general discussions. But um the summary here that covers our central business district, our commercial district, industrial, basically our non-residential districts and then things that are affected by the changes like our parking codes. Um in the central business district, there is one thing missing in here, I noticed. Um it's actually in the code changes themselves, but um it was left out of the summary and that does include the bicycle parking facilities. And I know we're gonna have a discussion about that. But that would also, there would be a a requirement for bicycle parking facilities in the central business. Um we added some allowed uses that make sense in the central business district that um weren't clearly spelled out before some which already exists, like bowling alley and a theater and things like that. So recreation and entertainment uh venues, parking facilities, like parking structures, if we ever, you know, wanna do that. Um live work structures, which is kind of coming out of our housing action plan. We're trying to provide more opportunities for housing in commercial districts when it makes sense. So if you have somebody who's um a caretaker or something like that, they can actually have a a living unit on the facility. The second one is the one that was generated by the issue with the some properties that the first owned in the central business district. So we had previously um a minimum density of twenty units per acre in the central business district. And um one of the problems that we run into there are there are several areas within the central business district that are longtime residential areas and they have very small lots that are less uh the lots we were looking at were point one six acres. So it was just impossible for them to be able to develop those lots under that particular requirement because you um when you include parking and try to get density, you just can't squeeze it into a point one six acre. So we identified certain zones in the central business district, all located away from Yelm Avenue and First Avenue, which we still want to develop as densely and as commercially as possible, where there's existing residential areas already. Um and we have um included allowing um duplexes and some small multifamily units, but they are only going to be allowed on lots that are point two acres or less. So it's gonna keep it on those pre-existing small lots that really aren't developable anyway, other than by allowing some other kind of development. And it would be consistent with what's already there now. Yes.
So so from my understanding, this wouldn't inhibit the property owner or the developer. It would actually give them more option to do with the smaller amount of property, some more options, some more wiggle room to develop.
Yes, uh it would allow them to develop something that's currently undevelopable unless they had the ability to buy adjacent lots and combine them. Um you know, so that they could have more acres and then get some density, but that's very often not a practical choice. So um it is designed to be limited to the very small pre-existing neighborhoods and not on our commercial strips.
Go ahead.
Uh I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number one, one, two, four, and maybe title eighteen of the municipal code.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Counselor Kaminsky. Any further discussion? Counselor Wood.
Um I just uh simply believe that uh we are in the process of a a whole lot of overreach, uh both on the last topic as well as this one. So I'm gonna I'm gonna once again vote vote no on this. I think that that's a good idea to make some changes. I just think that drop this with all the all the changes is, you know, I think it should be split out into decisions rather than one major decision on many, many topics.
Counselor Hess, the Richardson, or I mean, excuse me, Crossman. Go ahead, Councilor Hess.
I just wanna make sure that some of these uh code changes, majority of them are for uh future development. And everybody basically is kind of grandfathered, but we want to encourage them to update according to the new codes. Is that correct?
Gary.
Uh well, the any new development, unless they're just remodeling a you're talking about what we call non-conform uses when you say grandfather. If they're not expanding it, they can keep it forever. They can paint it. They can, you know, go up sometimes, but anything new would have to comply with our new codes.
You're correct. Yes, Councilor Hess. Councilor Crossman.
Yeah, um so I like a lot of code updates you put in here. Uh there were a few things, yeah, earlier that you guys fixed. It'll be nice. My main complaint about this whole, like I said, all lumped together is the requirement for the bicycle parking. Um once I really delve into it more, I mean, some of it's, you're looking at, it's like upwards of ten thousand dollars when you combine long term and short term bike parking in some of these businesses. And I just don't think that's an expense that business owners should have to take on. Um I could see the importance of having bicycle parking at some locations, some businesses, but it's a blanket for every business. Um this doesn't make sense. There's numerous businesses I can rattle off that. It just doesn't make sense to have, require them to put bicycle parking in when most likely they will never ever have anybody use it and have that expense in there. Um so I would like to see this go back that the whole bicycle parking portion of it removed. And I'd be more than happy to pass everything else because uh most of it's a pretty good idea.
Can I respond to that? Because you made a comment today at public. Can I respond to that? Because you made a comment today at public services meeting, which um, was a re- really good point. It's a, it's a point that I had missed in our previous proposal. And that has to do with page twenty, and I guess I better go there. And I was going to propose recommending adoption of this with an amendment to one piece for the bicycle. Proposal. So let's see what you think about this, okay?
An option, can we amend this? I thought it was all in A.
You can, you can move to approve it by, and, and to amend a certain portion. And then what I would do is I would take it back. Strike those things that, and what you're looking at. And that would give Kathy the code as approved. And then she would send it to code changes. But let me just sort of.
Are you asking if we have to go bring it to the planning commission again? Was that the?
No, I'm asking, I thought, I didn't know we could amend it and remove an item. I thought it had to be. Okay.
There's a motion and a second on the floor, so that would have to be amended.
Now, you're gonna have to bear with me while I get to page twenty-eight.
Let's go to Councilmember Palmer who had a question and then we'll get back to you, Gary.
Uh, Gary's actually about to answer, I believe. So I was just gonna ask about amending the, uh, the item. So fair enough.
So the, the point you made today, and it had kind of escaped me. Uh, had to do with the long-term bicycle parking. And we've got several requirements for a long-term bicycle parking that I would actually like to see removed. I don't think that that we need that, at least at this point in time and not in the foreseeable future. Bicycle parking is the more expensive kind of parking. It's the lockers. The only two areas where we would like to see it remain would be for hospitals. So when we build that big hospital, there might be some long-term parking and for boarding houses and all of the other long-term parking requirements we would like to remove. So, so you've got those two situations where there's long-term. The rest, um, it's basically the short term. It's basically the little hoops that you see outside of a, you know, a safe way or a next to the skate park. So here, here's the uh, now Cody, how do I expand this to make, so we can see the whole?
The comments and hit that X to the left of the comments, you'll get rid of that.
Oh, okay. Sorry, gang.
The other left side.
The other X on the tools. On the left side. All right, here we go. Okay, so so you see all of those minimum long-term parkings. We, we would recommend that we do actually get rid of those with the two exceptions that I said. And we would keep the short term. Those are not costly and I did a little thing today, just a slide. I'd worked on parking a lot, um. Before I came here, because it's been kind of a big issue, but move the slide here. You know, in terms of cost of businesses. Can't find it, it's all right. I can't find it, but I'll just give you what the slide says. It shows a physical hoop, like a double hoop parking. Uh, commercial, I looked up commercial to make sure it was actually in a proper example. Two hundred and sixty dollars. Four bolts. Uh, so whatever it costs to put that in the ground, that's, that would be the cost. Parking spaces. Uh, City of Lacey in twenty twenty-one did a study of cost to businesses and developers to install parking spaces. And they did it by interviewing several different architectural firms around the city. Many of whom actually work here, like Thomas Architects, for example, who's working with Steve. Um, and the averages they got for a surface parking stall is six thousand dollars per stall. Structured parking, if it's above ground, was twenty to thirty thousand per stall. And the underground parking was thirty to fifty thousand per stall. So, I mean, the cost of eliminating one parking space, and I'm not saying that you would eliminate it, although there's a potential to do that if they choose to. But uh, it's two hundred and sixty versus six thousand. That's the best comparison. Um, it's also taken us far off the street. So I, I, my representation of this is that this is a minimum burden on a business to apply a short-term parking space or a bicycle parking.
Councilor Richardson.
Uh, I do appreciate that amended uh, ordinance a lot better. Uh, tell us how to get there, Kathy.
So what you do is you'd make a friendly amendment to this um, to the motion. Correct me if I'm wrong, Kathy, any of this. Um, we would strike, if I'm assuming the council wants to take off the bicycle. We would strike amended to remove minimum short-term bicycle parking spaces and then long-term bicycle parking spaces. Correct, Kathy? And uh, it would have to be agreed upon by the original motioner. And then it would have to be voted on um, by the council to add that amendment to the original motion. And then if that passes, we would go to the original motion, um, which is now amended and then go to council to vote for that.
Since it was your motion, you can amend your motion and then the second.
Council Richardson, go ahead.
I would like to amend my motion in that fancy language that was proposed that I can't recall.
Is there a second? Second by Councilor Palmer. So is there any further discussion on this?
Specifically for short-term and long-term bicycle parking or, or are you choosing one or the other or trying to eliminate both?
As I stated, it would have been both the minimum and the maximum, excuse me, the minimum short-term bicycle parking spaces and minimum long-term bicycle parking spaces.
You're assuming that and that's why I'm asking.
Well, that wasn't my recommendation. I don't want, if I could clarify my recommendations. Would just eliminating long-term parking with the exception of hospitals and boarding houses. Short-term would remain.
As the motioner and the amender, is that what you?
I was hoping to uh, do both.
Okay, so as it stands now, it is with both minimum short-term bicycle parking spaces and then long-term bicycle parking spaces. Is that your?
Yes.
Amendment. And it was seconded still by Councilor Palmer? Okay. Is there any further discussion now on this?
Further discussion for me, please.
So you could come back with a, a code change just for the bicycle parking, clean that up, what you're talking about and just present that item, just like the pothole things, right? Not to, you know, give you no more work to do, anything.
I mean, uh, we could come back. Yeah. Yeah, every.
Councilmember.
You don't have to at all.
Councilmember Hess.
Yes, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding this correctly. The code change is in reference to the bicycle parking, whether it's temporary or long-term. Future development must meet that code, or if a current property owner is going to make changes, then they have to meet said code. But for those, for those property owners that are not making any adjustments, they don't have to make, meet that code. Example, company A, property owner A, who's been in Yelm for twenty years. And this code passes, they're not required to put in the bicycle parking unless they decide to do a major update. But company or property owner B, who is now getting ready to develop their property, they must adhere to this new code change. Am I correct on?
That is correct. And the original motion and the amended motion that takes, strikes both the minimum short-term bicycle parking space and the minimum long-term bicycle parking spaces. Is that understood?
It's understood, but I'm, I'm trying to understand what, what the issue is with the bicycle parking. We're not causing any current property owners to take on an expense at this time. We're saying for future property owners that this is something to do, such as new apartment complexes. Uh, new things to provide for our bicycling community. Whether it's an adult or a child, a place to secure their bicycle as they move about in our community.
Councilmember Palmer.
To answer that, I, I believe a lot of uh, business owners and property owners that would like to pursue, you know, bicycle communities and such are gonna put those in. And if it's deemed necessary to their constituents or customers or whoever, I think they're going to do that. So this just leaves it up to the business owners, their customers and, you know, the, the public at large. So I think that's a kind of conversation they can have with those, whoever they're doing business with or living with. So I think it just keeps it in the hand of the, you know, private entities.
Any further discussion? Councilman Kaminsky.
So if I'm okay with short-term bicycle racks, then I have to vote no on the whole package.
You can vote no on this amendment and that would bring us back to the original motion, which was to approve it unamended. This is for the, you are voting right now on the amendment. The amendment takes away short, minimum short-term bicycle parking spaces and then long-term bicycle parking spaces, as was amended by Councilmember Richardson. Is there any discussion, any further discussion?
I just have one more thing.
Go ahead.
Yes. In reference to it, I agree with my fellow councilmember that yes, businesses who want to do such a thing, they will do it. But if I recall, we had a, we had a code in our community of hitching posts were required for all businesses. And I understand that, you know, we've probably removed that one. But we do things like that at times to help out our residents, to make sure that they can have those items that are needed for them to be able to be successful moving about in our community. Am I incorrect on that?
Is there, are you? What, what is the question, direct question that you're asking, Brad, or Councilmember Hess?
I'm just pointing out that, yes.
You asked a question. You asked, am I correct? What was?
Yes, I'm incorrect. Yes, I was correct that we used to require all businesses to have a hitching post to tie their horses. Am I correct about that?
I'm not sure. And possibly back in the day, that's possible. Any other questions, comments on the amendment here? All right, we are voting now on the amendment to this motion. This is to amend um, ordinance number one, one, two, four, to remove the minimum short-term bicycle parking spaces and minimum long-term bicycle parking spaces. We will take the vote now. Let's do a roll call. Start with Councilmember Wood.
No.
Council Richardson.
Yes.
Council Crossman.
Yes.
Council Kingizer.
No.
Council Hess.
No.
Council Palmer.
Yes.
Council Kaminsky.
No.
Four, three, no, yeah, it's council's. Motion carries, correct?
No.
So I'm sorry. I'm sorry. The, okay, yeah, four to three, you're right. Motion fails to amend the minimum short-term bicycle parking spaces and on the long-term bicycle parking spaces. Now, the original motion is still on the floor, um, unamended. Do we have any further discussion on this? This is to pass ordinance number one, one, two, four, updates Title eighteen Unified Development Code as is. Council Crossman.
Again, just to say, I have no problem with uh, some bicycle parking requirements in places that make sense. It's the places that don't make sense that I oppose. And this is just too much of a blanket word, everything. So like long-term, like said, uh, boarding houses apartments, I could agree with that. That, that makes sense. Um, but there's a lot of businesses that this doesn't make sense for. And that's my main um, thing that I'm against. With that.
Understand, that's why we were proposing to get rid of the, all the long-term except for those two things that.
Any other questions, comments?
We're happy to go back and rework that. I, you know. Cody's, I'll let Cody do the pick next time.
I, I think we're, we're good here to, to vote. Is there any other further questions or comments? You're voting now to pass ordinance number one, one, two, four, updates Title eighteen Unified Development Code. Councilwood, how do you vote?
No.
Council Richardson?
Nope.
Council Crossman?
No.
Council Kingizer?
No.
Council Hess?
Yes.
Council Palmer?
No.
Council Kaminsky?
Yes.
Moving on to the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six capital budget presentation. Stephanie, I believe this is you.
Yep.
Thank you, Gary.
The drawing board.
Sister, have you enjoyed?
It is, that, that cracks me up.
When you're ready?
Go ahead.
So we're presenting the um, twenty-five, twenty-six capital budget. And Cody and I are gonna go through this together because it's mostly him. So um, in twenty twenty-five in the general fund, we've talked about this before. Um, we are requesting um, funding for one officer's equipment and vehicle. We're requesting um, additional flock cameras. Um, we're ju- uh, requesting an upgrade to our laser feature system. Um, we are moving our financial system from on premise to the cloud. And I'll talk about that during my finance presentation in a little bit. Um, and then we have a little bit of money in there for facility repairs that might come up like HVACs and some things like that. In twenty twenty-six, um, we're requesting money for two police officers' equipment and vehicles. Um, flock cameras again and additional facilities. And if you have any questions, um, go ahead and stop me and ask. So in the municipal building fund, twenty twenty-five projects, um, we have the Yelm Prairie Line Trail that is grant funded. We have the um, Yelm City Park Master Plan. Do you have a grant for that?
Not yet.
Okay. And the Veterans Memorial Park um, is unfunded. It's to be determined. Um, we probably, we would bring that um, back if we did get that grant. Um, as you recall, in last year's budget and this year's budget, um, we are parking some one-time money that we received in the general fund. We moved seven hundred and fifty thousand last year. This year, we're requesting to move a million dollars to the municipal building fund in a separate reserve to be used for future governmental buildings. So that will sit in a reserve and council would have to decide how they wanted to spend that money.
Stephanie, is that, that seven hundred and fifty thousand from what you just said? The one million is in addition to the seven hundred and fifty thousand. That's why that number.
Total of one million, seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Thank you.
That's it on the municipal building fund. Do you have anything to add?
No, um, we are, so Veterans Memorial, the park is kind of leading the charge to get funding for that. So if you remember, arc is uh, parks, uh, arts, recreation and conservation. Um, so they, they're leading the charge with the legislators to try to get funding for that to make that completely state-funded. Um, we met today with Barkus and McCoon and it sounds very promising that they're going to back that and try to get us money for that Veterans Memorial. So just to add to that part, we're excited about that part.
We have the Road and Street Construction Fund in twenty twenty-five. Um, we're looking at the one-way couplet here from Kansas City Hall. Rotten Road and the Ball Hill Roundabout. And then we don't have anything in twenty twenty-six yet. And projects go, what will happen is we'll go through twenty twenty-five and figure out at the towards the end of twenty twenty-five, what we can do in twenty twenty-six. We'll come to council if we need to carry anything over or if we have new projects.
I'll duck really, but there's one other, sorry. Um, so there, we are getting quite a bit of development coming in that is providing for um, some kind of control at Long Meyer and five-ten. That could be a roundabout, could be a light, if you know, we're along my right next to Gigi Quilts. So the money we're coming in will probably, will come with amendment once it's those developments go forward and there will be some kind of control there. Most likely a light, but it could be a roundabout, um, because that traffic facilities charges would go straight to that. So expect that to be if these developments come in in the next year, that'll probably be a bungee amendment you would see in late twenty-five or early twenty-six to build that with that traffic.
Okay, water capital improvements in twenty twenty five, we have the southeast reservoir project that you've already began. And then water main improvements um are planned for that fund in twenty twenty five.
The one thing you will, you might see in twenty six is you'll start seeing siding for a new well. Um, we got to start looking at locations for a new well. It depended on what obviously happened tonight, so we'll start looking at locations for new wells and we'll have that probably in the twenty six budget at some point. Um, we just needed to know what the path was getting forward, so we'll have to start signing that location.
Then the sewer capital improvements, um, still working on the W R F, um, expecting completion in twenty twenty six.
Uh, twenty five, so next year it'll be complete. So it'll, what they do is they do something called startup, so everything will be put together in March of next year, but then they do a startup sequence where they kind of start things up and make sure everything functions for the next six months. And so we estimate uh September of twenty five, it'll be fully online, good to go. March, it will start being able to run and take new flows, but we don't officially take over it until it goes through entire startup phase where they turn on your equipment, make sure it works. So that's, that'll be end of twenty five, that would be complete.
And then Cochrane Park ribs.
Yeah, so we're gonna put a, a rib joint in Cockno. So Cochrane Park, as you know, we got the okay from mythology to do upgrades, so that involves a gazebo build. Um, a what I call the El Magio, we're gonna put lighted fountains in that big pond, because why not? It's actually very cheap, it's not very expensive. Um, and then upgrade that whole back half, rip apart, clean it up, make it beautiful. And we get to actually remove a lot of the vegetation because we're not going to be doing what we thought we were going to be doing there. So that front pond will actually be able to pull those giant reed weeds out that are removing nitrogen, because we're going to do that all the plan. So Cochrane Park will get a major face lift over the next two years, which will make it, I think, much more aesthetically pleasing and a wedding attraction for all. If you're planning on getting married or have kids that might get married, so.
All right, and then in the E R and R um equipment rental and replacement, um, we are planning on replacing three police vehicles in twenty twenty five and five in twenty twenty six. Those are in addition to the new officer vehicles that we are requesting to be purchased from the general fund. So lots of police vehicles if we can find them.
Yeah, so the police vehicles on an eight year rotation, so every eight years we plan to replace them. Um, they do keep the best of the best police vehicles for backups in case there is a chase and one of them gets damaged. So out of those eight we're replacing, I'm sure they'll keep three to four of them as backups and the rest will sell back to replenish that general fund. But we are in an eight year replacement plan with those, and that's how we put the money in the R R's to plan to replace every vehicle in eight years. They have a lot of idle hours, that's the biggest thing, so they burn out pretty quickly, eight years is about the max they can go.
And one thing, if you can, I can find my cursor. Oh, there. So if you can see my cursor up there, when we're looking at these funds, we're talking about this capital outlays expenditure line. Is what these projects are all going to be spent out of, so. Um, I think that is the end of our capital. Any questions on the capital? We're going into, so we're done.
All right, um, we'll move on then to department budget presentations with public services, human source, human resources, finance and executive. Yeah, let's, let's, let's have Stephanie go first, just because she's already loaded up. I hope.
Okay, so, still overview of the finance department. Going through some of our twenty three, twenty four accomplishments. We did um adopt travel policy, traffic seating and electronic file transfer policies. And those are in compliance with state laws and regulations um and guidance from the Washington State Auditor's Office. We collaborated with public services and the finance department to improve our procurement procedures. And we are going to bring forward a revision to our procurement policy in early twenty twenty five. Um, as you know, we selected and implemented ClearGov budgeting software, and I've been very happy with that. It has saved us an enormous amount of time. I'm really excited about the transparency piece when we actually put this budget document on the website for people to get in and look at and play around with. So that's kind of an exciting thing. Um, we did have somebody leave the finance department, and so we were able to promote two staff that we already had into financial analyst positions. Um, one is focused on B and O taxes, the other one does a lot of the payroll for us. And then we did hire an accounting assistant. Um, and then what we've been focusing in finance is cross training of staff. So I have three people that could do accounts payable for us. I only have one person that's processing payroll, so I've got another person learning how to do the payroll. I've got a, another area that we're trying to cross train is utility billing. I have one person that does utility billing, I want to have at least two people. So every key operating function within our department, we hope to have somebody cross trained. So in twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, um, I want to finish our first phase of implementation of the ClearGov software and then possibly look at adding the capital budgeting piece and more of the transparency modules in twenty six. Um, right now, our bias financial software is hosted on site. And we want to move that to the cloud, and my next slide, I'll kind of explain why. Um, we need to adopt capital asset, debt sensitive asset and reserve financial policies, so I'll be bringing those forward to council. Um, I just said we're going to update our procurement policy and we're working on succession planning. So my budget request, one was the bias cloud, so the one time expenditure of that is twenty six thousand. So we've hosted the financial system on site, but the software company that we use no longer supports on, they call it on prim, on prim software. They're moving everybody to the cloud, so because of that, we're not getting all of the updates. We're not able to take advantage of anything new that they implement in that software. Um, for example, they've added a report writing software to bias that we don't use because we're not on the cloud. The other thing about the cloud, it's updated three times daily to prevent data loss. The other nice thing is that if um we have a director that's say out of town, they can easily get into login to the cloud and they're able to approve time sheets or accounts payable. So there's just a lot of features in moving our software to the cloud. Um, things that we just can't do right now because it's on site on premise, so. Um, the other thing is I have the utility billing clerk position. I want to change that to an accounting technician position. I'm not asking for a new F T E, it'll be the same F T E, it's just a little upgrade to that position. That will allow me for that person to cross train into other functions within the finance department. So they can learn how to do accounts payable, they can learn how to do accounts receivable, and it's a it also keeps them more engaged with the department. And I mean, everybody likes to learn new things, so that person is going to be able to participate in that succession planning and get that cross trained within the department. And that is it for finance, any questions?
All right, thank you, Stephanie. Cody, hear about public services.
Hey, look at that. Okay, I'll be brief counsel, a lot of this stuff was um scripting me, that's really awesome. A lot of this was in my capital request, so you'll see, I'll just kind of briefly cover some of the stuff we've done. There's no, I'm not even on audio.
Just continue.
I like the subtitles. Yeah, so we catered everybody here. Um, so some of our accomplishments, uh, construction of the new W R F is nearing completion, you, as we know, we started that three years ago, but we're almost through it, which is awesome. We upgraded the stage of city park to be the awesome amenity it is. Um, we continue improvements to development process, so continuing to go through our code and refine it, make it nice. Um, we started updates to design guidelines, our unified development code and comp plan. Uh, we finished design of Cochrane Park Phase Two, so all that Yelm Magio stuff we were talking about is done, it's completed design wise, we just have to build it. Um, we started and completed construction of Southeast Reservoir, I'm saying that because Southeast Reservoir should be complete this year in December. Um, we'll have some bills that will come in next year, but it'll be done um this year, which is awesome. We started to design, design of the activated alleyway, that should be, the design should be complete soon. Um, we'll complete construction of trail to Nisqually Bridge, we did that, most of you were at the opening, which was awesome. Cool, can keep up with my actual speech, we're gonna talk fast. Um, we are currently in design of the next section over the bridge, which is great. We created a streets department, so as you know, council allowed us two employees and we actually opened a streets department for the first time in our history. This in twenty twenty three, which would you blow your mind that we didn't have a streets department for that long. And then um we have solar panels and battery backup installed community center, the batteries aren't there yet, but they will be there next month, so I'm saying that's a, that's a good win. I didn't put the parking lot on there because I consider that part of the alleyway, so. We did build parking lot. Um, twenty five, twenty six goals, we want to start and complete Cochrane Far- Park Phase Two, which would be awesome. We want to start and complete construction of the five oh seven Bald Hills Roundabout, the Morris Road Bald Hills Roundabout. Those both should, both should start next year and be complete. So a lot of this you'll see is focused on transportation, because now we're starting to get things moving. Um, we're starting construction of the downtown quarter plan, so one thing we really want to focus on, if we can get state money, is to start connecting these roads, connect Mazman all the way through, get Forest Street upgraded, all that. Um, we want to start and complete road and road construction, as you know, we have uh state funding to start the construction of that or start the design of that, which is awesome. Um, and if you need me to pause it because I'm talking too fast, let me know or just read it. Uh, start and complete Veterans Memorial Construction, so that should, if we get the funding, we think we will, and it sounds like we will. We'll start design in twenty five, we'll start construction late twenty five, early twenty six and be complete that same year. Um, start and complete Perry Line Trail over Nisqually, so that bridge should start construction early next year, and then that will be complete. We're going to open very, hopefully similar time as what we did this year for that trail, which would be awesome, hope to have you all there. Um, I kept Community Garden there because we want to kind of revamp the Community Garden and create something even better than what we currently have. And we're working with the person to kind of add some other sections to that. So Community Garden created is like a, keeping the same thing. Um, we obtained over four million in grant funding in twenty five, twenty six, we're going to keep doing that. We want to obtain over four million in grant funding, that should not be a problem at all. And we're going to do intersection improvements at Long Meyer five, ten, I just mentioned that, so we have a lot of money coming in, those improvements will be happening. Uh, my budget requests, I tried to keep it very short, we asked for seven new employees. Um, two parks, one street, one grants manager, one traffic engineer and two wastewater, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So um, you know, I, we understand that all of those can be funded, but that's what we need to get the job done that we have, so you'll see some of those come through. Um, the biggest ones on there are the grants manager, which we're working with finance for, um, traffic engineers, another one we thought, we don't really have anyone to do traffic. We always have to send everything out, so it'd be cool to have someone kind of create a general plan for that. Um, wastewater employees, our new plant will acquire at least one new wastewater operator, so we added that to the list. And then the park, we built a dog park and a trail, and we're using our current staff to maintain that instead of adding another employee, which we want to do. And then you'll see this capital budget for more street sidewalks projects, so we finally are, we're tackling a section, which we've never done before, of sidewalk every year. So we, uh, council has strategically put away money every year to tackle a section of sidewalk. So we're going to start using that, you'll see the first section will be Soulberg, we're going to connect the sidewalk at McDonald's down to where Mazman is. There's about, I don't know, fifty to eighty middle school kids that walk that, and there's no sidewalk there, and they walk that grass next to that fence, the apartments. That'll be our first section, the next section we're going to tackle is railroad to Middle Road to connect that sidewalk to Fort Stevens. So we're getting, we have these sections, we're going to slowly start tackling that we can do ourselves, we can design ourselves and use with our funding. So that's really what we want to do is get more sidewalks to get more people able to walk places safely. And there's my presentation in three minutes or less.
Questions? Moving on. Thank you, Cody. Let's go to human resources. Was our IT guy?
This minute, yeah.
But anyway, let's move on here. So um for the human resources department, we have um onboarded thirty eight employees. Into the system through twenty three, twenty four.
Just go off your sheets and we can get that to council after.
Yeah, and whatever comes up, it'll kind of outline all the thirty eight employees that we brought to the, the staff here, you know, to get all these wonderful projects done. Um, we updated the city of young personnel policies in twenty twenty three and um it had been two thousand seven since it was last updated, so that was quite an accomplishment. Are you watching me? We created a benefit guide for new hires and for um open enrollment at the end of the year, so everybody would know what choices they could make for benefits, which was, has helped a lot of people understand our processes. Um, we updated all young job descriptions, um, updated to reflect um, um, our current branding and wage information. Um, in twenty twenty three, we achieved Well City Stan um a status um for twenty twenty four, which was uh two percent savings of twenty four thousand dollars. And um, um, during this time period, twenty twenty four, we are negotiating three union contracts currently. Um, and then we developed and implemented a leadership training program for executive team. Um, so my goals for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six is for each of the, those years to achieve the Well City award again for a two percent discount, which will be uh much bigger savings than twenty four thousand, maybe about twenty seven thousand dollars for twenty twenty five. And depending on what kind of rate increases we get, um, more than that for twenty twenty six. So it's a significant savings. And then we are going to try to implement a benefits letter to each and every employee each year that outlines all of their benefits, so like your wage and what your benefits cost the city and what they cost yourself. So at the bottom of the page of all their benefits and their wages, they'll actually see how much they really earn. So like if you earn fifty thousand dollars, you're probably making eighty thousand with all your benefits. So looking at that for people that are employees and they're going into like, let's say negotiations, and they don't really appreciate that fifty thousand really is, you know, eighty, eighty five thousand with all the benefits they receive. So we're gonna try to, we want to do it this year, but since negotiations are taking, you know, significantly longer than we thought. I um, I'm putting that to twenty twenty five to be successful at that. And then um, we're just going to proactively uh do a lot of education and training in um preventing accidents around the city because the liability is so high. And so the more we can do to prevent and educate our employees. And then, I guess my last thing, um, for my request for budget is zero, I need nothing for the next two years.
Thank you, Karen, thank you.
So there, one thing if I could, uh, Karen is pretty humble about what she does for the city, and she just attended a conference two weeks ago, I hear. So Mayor, one thing if I could, uh Karen is pretty humble about what she does for the city and she just attended a conference two weeks ago, I hear. Uh and we received a special award while she was in Chelan, city of Yom did, so I just want to read something real quick and. And it says, the city of Yom was recognized at the AWC Risk Management Service Agency Annual Meeting in Chelan. For their hard work and dedication to proactively managing their risks, improving community safety and contributing to lower insurance costs. Improving their liability claims experienced over the past year earned them RMSA's Risk Management Achievement Award. There we go.
Thank you Karen. All right, moving on to the last uh department budget presentation, we have the executive department, Todd's gonna go ahead and speak about that.
Hold it up here. Well, just talk, what, the executive department consists of the mayor, myself, Kathy and Lynn. There's four of us uh that make up that executive department, so when you.
Positions though. City clerk.
City clerk, communications, uh recreation coordinator, city administrator. So we'll dive right in and we're the last one for the night. Uh we're gonna hit the accomplishments uh first from twenty-three and twenty-four. And here we go, so uh we started a business roundtable discussions, as many of you have attended and seen, uh we have another one coming up here. Uh in early next, early November, uh we expanded community conversations to include quarterly evening discussions. Um which the mayor started and I think we've had two or three of those. We have advanced transportation projects, obviously that's a priority for all of us, uh we, we had two director and council retreats over the last two years. Um that we feel pretty good about and we're excited about the uh retreats moving forward. Managed funding opportunities for beautification grants and outside agency funding. Created and published Yom one-on-one presentations for all departments, I know all of you have seen those, we appreciate all your feedback. Um if you have any, please send them our way, uh we want to finalize those and get those ready to go out to the public. Uh we secured property for the future Veterans Memorial, uh we onboarded five new council members in the last two years. We improved process and accountability for use of city facilities. We entered the consulting phase for the six hundred and forty acre Thurston Highlands property. Improved and expanded communication and outreach through multiple avenues in our communications department. We had a very successful one hundred year centennial celebration and drone show. At this year's Prairie Days and we had one, over one hundred Parks and Rec Act events, activities and programs in uh in the last two years.
Well, which, uh just real quick, I, I want to give a shout out to Lynn who, who um. Hadn't gotten award for the city for our mush, mush ball um tournament, it's. I think it's either the end of this week or next week is for the um award, is the nominee for the um, the greater. Greater Thurston area, um anyway.
Sport, sporting event. Yep, our twenty twenty-five goals prepared plan for future growth in Yom, including in, are you doing this one? Preparing plan for future growth in Yom, including an assessment of city buildings uh to accommodate future growth. Uh advocate with regional partners to increase transportation improvement opportunities and secure funding as needed. Uh develop standard operating procedures for key positions. To assist in succession planning for critical roles and ensure continuity of essential government operations. Um updates to city website to improve communication and outreach and expand and improve recreational oppo- opportunities or activities. Okay, Kathy, this is you.
So, yes, um additional goals are implementation, implementation of our Laserfish Records Management Module. That was in the presentation that Stephanie gave you, that will enhance Laserfish as our repository where we store all of our records. Um and that will allow us to put a retention on each record when it goes into the system. So we are bound, every record that we create within the city has a retention that's set by the archives and so. Right now, we have a lot of shared drives, we have everything in Laserfish and the only way to truly manage what records that we can legally. Destroy that are no longer in use, literally go out through every file, this program will allow us to. Go in, assign a retention to it based on the schedule, how long we have to keep it. And then we run a report every year, review it and we can automatically um get rid of those records that. Um we can legally do that. Uh we are going to create and implement social media records management and public records policies. And those are really just to, so we can manage and preserve our records and comply with the laws and regu- regulations. Um we have, those will help our employees. Every single record that is created by every employee and we have roughly eighty, including elected officials. Um everything you do is creating a record, every employee, every text, every piece of paper, every, whether it's electronic. Um and so just having those policies in place to manage those, fill the public records, um will help a lot. Um updates to the mayor council member protocol manual, which we're working on a general government committee now. Um but we'll hopefully we'll have those to you early in the year to the full council, we'll bring them to a study session and then a meeting for adoption. Uh we're gonna utilize the Yom one-on-one presentations that you guys are reviewing now. Um we're gonna do onboarding for new employees, we're working with HR, so we're. Talking about possibly like a quarterly. Um presentation, you know, not each employee that comes on, but maybe quarterly, whoever, anybody that was hired during that quarter. Will definitely be using those as we have new official, new elected officials. Um and then possibly maybe there might be some public opportunities that we can do those to educate the public on what we do. Um and then the other goal is to navigate a successful election period. Including onboarding and educating our new council members, um or if we have, you know, once the election next year. Um budget requests, we have the Laserfish Records Management Module that I already talked about. Um we are requesting a deputy clerk position. Um it would create a full-time position that would help manage all of those records that are being created by all of our employees, uh manage the storage retention. Um and then also it would back up the city clerk position.
That also goes into our succession planning that we're trying to do overall. Um if Kathy is, for whatever reason, leaves for one day, we have someone that can pick right up and continue operations for the city.
And then. Um let's see.
The seasonal parks and recreation assistant uh would provide assistance to our. Parks and Rec Coordinator uh during the busy summer season and to provide the ability to actually increase activities that we already do offer. And that's it. Does she have questions?
Very much. Thank you Todd, Kathy. All right, moving on to old business, non-scheduled, moving on to standing council committee report, starting with the Public Safety Committee. Are there any meetings for the Public Safety Committee?
No meeting from Public Safety.
Okay, thank you, moving on to Public Services Committee.
Here we're a short meeting today and the biggest thing. Um just keep in mind is next year, coming before council will be the annexation, a mass annexation. That is being proposed by Thurston County, there's not, it's not fully set in stone, how many parcels there is, it's still working on it, but there's approximately. Two hundred and fifty-eight parcels that will be coming into city limits. Adds four miles of roads and over a thousand acres of property. But uh it will clean up, it's all the funky places in city aren't city limits that you think it would be city limits that. I drive by, I was like, oh, that's not city limits, oh, that is, but why is that or whatnot, so helps cleaning up those lines, so. I'll keep that in mind for next year.
Just say over a thousand acres.
Yes.
In you.
That will be added to you, city limits.
A lot of land and unincorporated in our growth met or um.
That's not even the whole EGA. It's a small fraction.
Anything else?
That's it, man.
All right, moving on.
Yeah, is there a timeframe in that?
It's still working, it's upcoming next year.
Oh, okay.
So just keep that on your mind that. You're putting in some questions. I'm worried if it will be coming and there will be a joint with um Thurston County Commissioners. To get that process approved.
Thank you, uh moving on to Finance Committee.
None.
Moving on to General, General Government Committee.
We met um today, the very hour before this meeting and we worked on the mayor protocols and. And covered a bit of future agenda items and meeting.
Great. Um moving on to Mayor City Minister Staff Reports, Todd.
Yeah, the only thing I wanted to add was in the, from the police world, uh the flock cameras are installed. Um they're not um functioning it, it yet because they're working on uh making sure the policy is in place and that all officers go through the training. Uh which should happen in the next week or so, um all officers go through a training uh from flock. In order for, to, to use the system, so that's where they're at right now, but four cameras um have been installed and, and enter up. So I got.
All right, for me, um first just want to thank all the people that are here now, that, that were here. So you know, this is probably one of the biggest turnouts we've ever had, um I, at least over a decade. And um it's appreciated, obviously council, you know, is impacted by. By public input and I think this is how the process should work. So, thank you for all those that attended, thank you for all that are watching online and thank you council for the. Um good conversations and the deliberation on this. Um. Attended a mayor's meeting last week, we, or excuse me, two weeks ago, we held that at the, here at the Yom City Council, or City Council, the Yom Community Center. Um all the mayors from local areas for Thurston County met, we just discuss area things, it's our monthly meeting, it rotates between jurisdictions. And we just discuss items that are happening in each of our jurisdictions and um bounce ideas off each other for. Uh if we can help each other and support each other and just to learn about what's going on in their communities. Um other than that, we do have a business roundtable, as Todd mentioned, coming up next month. And we'll be reaching out, making sure that the Chamber of Commerce knows and they can spread it out to their members and we will also be putting it up on Facebook as well. Other than that, that's it for me, council member reports, Councilor Wood?
Uh I attended Transportation Policy Board meeting, um not a lot to report there, but afterwards I had an opportunity to sit down with uh. Director Daley and, and discuss some of the things that we had been talked about and I look forward to getting some more information, I, I let him know what we were looking at and what are. What, as far as the uh, yeah, a couple of different items we talked about. Look forward to bringing back some information on that after our next meeting.
Very good, Council Richardson.
Well, I attended Public Service Committee and I attended a General Governance Committee and they already talked about this.
Councilor Crossman. Councilor Kinggizer.
That's it, that's all you want to say? It's been a busy month for me, um I attended uh the Southeast Thurston Fire Authority Meeting. Um and they talked about the budget, service, different service contracts, ambulance billing rates, um changes. I attended an AWC class on tribal relations in government, that was very interesting, it kind of. Brought into my knowledge as far as, you know, why and how would the different tribes and how that all comes together. Um I attended the Thurston County Town Hall two weeks ago, three weeks ago, something like that. It was very interesting hearing Sheriff Sanders um just talk, he's, he's a very real guy and he really brings it down to earth for you. Um newly conversations, uh we, I think we had a good turnout, it was the first time I rushed, um actually from the. Uh Fire Authority Meeting and from work right over, it was a little late, but everybody was forgiving. Uh and that was really neat and also for anybody who's still watching out there, we definitely appreciate having, having people come. Uh I think transparency is the number one biggest thing that I feel that I am working on responding through emails. Um inviting the community to come to these meetings, um that's really what we're here for. And so I just wanted to express that for anybody who's still watching or will be watching, um and that's what I've been up to this month.
Thank you, Councilor Kinggizer, Councilor Hess.
Have nothing to add.
Okay, Councilor Palmer?
Uh no new meetings, uh I do appreciate everybody coming out. Obviously a lot more fun when we have community involvement, so thank you everyone for showing up.
Councilor Kaminski.
Uh no additional meetings that were not talked about, but I just want to say. I wish we had more time to talk together as a council about big events, because we get information. Everybody sits there and looks at each other and then we walk away and we don't get to talk as, have a conversation about anything. So, uh like this, this big issue that was here and I just. We could have bought ourselves three weeks to just talk. And that's what was thrown away and I don't see, I don't understand why that happened. And I think it was very short sighted of us, not to just find out about the well. Uh that, to me, was just an important element that nobody took into consideration and. We also failed to tell the public that this project was already funded by the Water Fund. And that there was no money coming out of any other place and I'm just sorry that the conversation's closed. I wish we had more time to talk about it.
Yeah, I mean, hopefully, not unfortunately, I, I think it's good that we have to have these conversations publicly. Um so that trust in transparency and public and government is there, I understand it wouldn't been easier just to. You know, make these decisions. Um have the conversations behind more closed doors.
So we understand more of the facts ourselves, like I learned more today in public services. Than I knew about this altogether, but half the people at this table were not there, so, I don't know.
A lot of us did go and talk to community members throughout the week and got their input and.
No, I'm not talking about the community members.
Develop the golf course from, so I, I think a lot of us actually did our due diligence outside of these chambers.
Well, and then there's different facts, like what Bill told us about the water rights is different than other things I've heard, so what is the true thing? But that would be our due diligence to find out the real, real truth, so that we all knew it, maybe you knew something, I don't know. But I got from a different source, so just having all the facts, I think it's just real important. Yeah. You know, the way it is.
Anything else?
No.
All right, there is no executive session scheduled, motion adjourned?
New adjourned.
There's a second, Secretary Councilor Crossman, all of us fair say I. Any post-seenote? Any opposing note?